Good evening and thank you for joining us tonight. It is 7:31 on Tuesday, August 19th, 2025. This is the regular school board meeting of the Board of Education of Warren Township High School District 121. I believe we just move on to the pledge, right?
Correct.
I know, I was thinking there should be a vote there.
No.
But I don't see it. Yeah. No, so let's rise for the pledge.
You have a flag?
There it is. On the screen, either one. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. I guess as long as you do it, it doesn't matter what screen you look at. Oh. All right. Uh, next is the approval of agenda. Are there any changes or items that need to be pulled from the consent agenda for board members?
Uh, for me.
Okay. So it'd be any last minute changes because ideally you would communicate that ahead of today. So, thank you. And moving on to recognitions, which is our favorite part of the meeting, um, where we recognize faculty, staff, parents, affiliated groups. We're going to turn it over to Dr. Weisman.
All right, tonight, we're happy to be celebrating our future business leaders of America, so we've got a few individuals here. I'll let them come up and, uh, take the mic over.
Hello, everyone. I'm Steve Rannick. I'm the head advisor for FBLA. Uh, we got to go to Anaheim, California this year for nationals, and I am happy to say not only did we have these two, uh, make the stage and be a finalist, but they were number one in the nation in their event. So we have national champs again, yeah.
Uh, this is Anya Polansky and Gia Sha. And, uh, if you want to talk to them about their event, I'll let them talk to you. So you guys go.
Hi, guys. Good to see you all again. Do you have any questions for us?
What'd you do?
Okay, so we had a project called Project Launchpad, and essentially we were tasked with creating a project that will support the American enterprise system in our community. Upon our initial research, uh, of the school and the surrounding community, we found that honestly, there wasn't that much knowledge about the American enterprise system to start with, and since we need a foundation for every single project, we wanted to be that foundation, hence Project Launchpad. We wanted them to take off. We decided we, education would be the basis of our presentation. So we went around to different schools and we educated within the Warren Township High School community about American enterprises, concepts, as well as entrepreneurship and business in general.
Um, oh, sorry. Some of the things we did were create presentations that we could give to the kids, and these presentations, uh, changed and we had to adapt them based on the age group that we were working with, because we took some of those presentations to the school level as well and taught some of the high schools at our school. Um, in addition, we also hosted community events such as a Shark Tank bingo event, where students would watch an episode of Shark Tank and mark off bingo, um, mark off words that they saw on their bingo cards, corresponding with what they saw on the screen. And so ultimately, we just wanted the community to get engaged while they were learning a little bit about American enterprise.
Uh, essentially, I'm sorry, go ahead. Um, yes, this is both of our third year in FBLA, so we've done competitive events prior years, but this one especially, we wanted to focus on creating a fun environment, because we know oftentimes, American enterprise system sounds something kind of like you would lecture, but our whole idea was for people, students and kids in the community to naturally engage with the American enterprise system and want to be a part of it outside of just our project. So our whole idea behind our campaign was to make it fun. So for the kids, we had them become entrepreneurs at Milburn Elementary. We made every single student become an entrepreneur for a day, create a product, pitch it to a market, think about cost, think about supply and demand, and they loved it. They were so happy. Uh, it was my favorite part of the project by far. Um, when we went at the high school level, we also played fun games with the high schoolers, so it wasn't another lecture. We made sure that they had fun while learning about the American enterprise system, because that's how we felt it would be best supported in our community.
Great job. Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Could you give us, could you give us an example of, of one of the projects that the kids came up with or?
Okay, so one of, we let the kids choose their own product that they could pitch to the classmates that they had, um, just to get them like in that sort of mindset of the elevator pitch, where they could pitch their product to their fellow classmates and understand how American enterprise kind of helps in the sense of like how money would flow in their business. So one of the students, um, drew out a Nintendo Switch that they really, really liked, and this product was so captivating to their audience members, because it brought the students together, because they all played video games. And so the students were really happy and really excited, and they, um, some of the students would even get up and be like, "I'll buy this one." And, um, a lot of the students really enjoyed that project, and, um, the students enjoyed pitching the project as well, getting that good feedback from their peers.
One question. Congratulations. Thank you for sharing your experiences. This was for your instructor. So how does, um, how do students become involved in future business leaders of America?
So basically, just the first thing they have to do, we have a national dues, so $20 dues they just pay at the bookstore, and then we add them to our Canvas page, and that's like our hub. Um, from there, we, we put out, we have social media, uh, that they can follow. We, if they don't have social media, like I said, we have that Canvas page, that's their main hub, and then we have our general meetings every month. We actually had a general meeting, our first one of the year already, last night. I know it's early, but we somehow, I think we had like 90 people show up, so it was kind of crazy. It was kind of fun. Um, so they can come to the general meeting, just, you know, as long as they get, uh, involved. They, and we also have some announcements, so just word of mouth, paying the dues gets them involved in the Canvas page, and then they get all that information, and we keep them updated on everything going on, so.
So it's open to anyone?
Uh, it's open to anyone, yes.
Great, great. Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you. All right, two more.
Yeah, of course.
How many people did you beat out to come in first in the country?
Um, we were the first out of 94 teams.
Wow.
Secondly, was there any, I mean, scholarship, anything? Did you win anything?
Um, so there was a $500 first place prize, um, and since there were two of us, we got to split the prize.
Is it cash or a scholarship?
Um, cash.
Okay.
Yep.
Better. Great job.
Yeah, great job.
Thank you.
Our students who are obviously incredibly talented, but we also know it, it, our talented faculty helps to facilitate that as well, so kudos to you as well. Appreciate it. That is, that is great. And these are also the kids that-
They're very entrepreneurial, you know?
Yeah. I always joke that these are the kind of students that we eventually were, are going to work for one day, so we always try to be really, really nice to those kids, because uh, they're the ones going to be running the corporations or starting their own businesses. Hire us, please, if we ever approach you. Oh, Linker, too. Excellent. All right, before we move on, um, I have a very nasty habit of forgetting to ask for a second and asking for discussions, so since the board polices itself, I'm encouraging my peers to call me on it when it, when I do it. It's just purely an oversight, because I try to move the meeting along, and doing so, I can and do make some errors, so forgive me for that. Uh, thank you. So after, now that we've done recognition, we're moving on, and Danny, is there anything more with recognitions?
Nope, that's all.
Okay, great. So we're going to move on to public comments. This is an opportunity for the community, uh, members to address the board. Are there any audience members that would like to speak at this, at this time? Okay, seeing none, uh, we can move on, and there wouldn't be any board discussion of visitor comment items due to the fact there was no public comment. After that, it's superintendent's report, where we have a few items on here, of which Dr. Weisman was going to lead us through these, so I'm going to turn it over to him.
Yeah, briefly, I just wanted to celebrate the start of school and thank all of the staff, uh, the administration, the staff, the support staff. Um, it is basically getting a small city up and running every year to do this, um, so I'm very grateful. We had a, I think, very smooth first week of school, that this year started a little bit early with Link Crew and training our Link Crew leaders and getting ready for that freshman experience. Uh, we had somewhere between five and 600, uh, incoming ninth graders come, uh, to that new experience, um, so really appreciate, uh, the administrative team over at Oak Lane, and, uh, there were a handful of teacher leaders, uh, that helped coordinate that and get that going. You saw two of our great, uh, Link Crew leaders here. Um, I was really impressed when I went to see the days that they were working with students, uh, to have these freshmen that I know, because I have kids that have had to transition from eighth to ninth grade. Uh, there's a lot of fear and anxiety and just unknowns for many of our students, not all of them, but for many of our students, uh, that first year in a big new school, so being able to see our older, more experienced, excited, uh, upper-class students working with these incoming ninth graders, uh, was really, really neat, and I think the feel for that first day of, uh, the training for the Link Crew leaders, uh, that first day where, uh, the students came in for that freshman experience, and then the traditional orientation day for ninth grade students, the feel is just very different, um, and I'm really grateful for Ms. Bertola, Dr. Bertola, uh, and her team, uh, for putting that together.
Could I just jump in? I am so grateful for that effort that was made regarding that. I saw on social media, there was a lot of anxiety for, from Link Crew parents about attendance for that, and, uh, people were worried, people weren't going to show up for it, because it wasn't mandatory, and when I heard the number of children that showed up, I was blown away. I was so happy. So congratulations to that team and all the students that put their hearts into it, and, and I'm so grateful that the freshmen were engaged enough to come in, so I just wanted to say, congratulations. That made, I was at work, and I was trying to get updates on what was happening, and I wanted to come, but I couldn't, so congratulations to everyone. That's, that's a great way to start the year, so just wanted to say.
Uh, between five and 600.
It's amazing.
Yeah, it's a good.
The majority of our freshmen.
Um, let's see, I do have, um, our final copy of our school improvement plan on a page. Um, everybody has a digital version, but then I also gave you a paper version. Um, some of the things that, from last year's turn, in terms of targets, measures and targets, we're really excited about, um, were, we, it looks like preliminarily, although the final data will come out, looks like we had a really good year for ninth grade on track. I appreciate the board's continued attention and deliberation about, uh, that topic. It's really supported our team internally, um, prioritizing that in our conversations and our actions.
Big jumps.
Big jump, big jump there.
I mean, that's, that's incredible, the jump. That, that much in one year is incredible.
Team worked hard on that. I appreciate them for that.
We appreciate that.
Um, some of the other things that I think are on here that, uh, we started measuring this last year, the last couple of years, and will continue to measure, are, there's a couple measures down there around behavior. Um, so we have this term behavior on track. Those are students that, at the end of the year, have zero, one, two, or three discipline referrals, so it's very few discipline referrals, and we're trying to be clearer around our targets for that every year, um, but generally trying to make sure that 85% or so of our students, um, are on track for behavior is our target, and we're, um, really grateful that we were able to stay above that this last year. The one under that, the behavior critical, these are students that, at the end of the year, have 11 or more behavior referrals. This includes, uh, like even a tardies are included in the behavior referrals, something as little as tardies, all the way up to some physical aggression or being involved in a fight. We're trying to keep that at 5%, uh, so, uh, we're, we're always trying to keep that low. Um, I'm also really proud of, uh, the score that our administration team got, uh, on the effective leaders category of the Five Essentials, uh, survey. That is something that's done annually with all school districts, um, and appreciate the extra effort that our administrative team is doing. That's a perception score, so the staff and employees are filling out a survey that, uh, really addresses five different categories. One of the categories is effective leaders, and they're just answering questions about how they're treated, uh, by their leaders, the types of programs that their leader set up, and how involved they are in decision-making. Um, and then we had a really good year for professional development this last year that we're hoping to, uh, continue to move forward on. Up on the top, um, you've seen this a handful of times, uh, you'll note that on the top row, we have student empowerment groups. We are extending our MBK program, uh, to include a female group this year. Uh, Trey came in and talked about My Brother's Keeper, um, and we have a, we're going to dip our toes into a female program that's modeled after that. Uh, we do have in our budget, uh, some dollars allocated for, um, Memorializing and Grow Your Own program that hopefully you'll hear about this year, and, um, we have some extra dollars budgeted for extracurricular involvement and access to try to move away from requiring as many, uh, fees for payment if students want to go on a trip or an activity. Um, Ninth Grade Seminar is an introductory ninth grade advisory course that we're working on, uh, proposing to in October for next year. Link Crew, you heard a little bit about Link Crew and talked about Dr. Bertola's team for that. On the top, uh, under Academic Excellence is Instructional Rounds. That's a really targeted attempt, uh, to make sure that our administrators are in classes on a regular basis, uh, throughout the year, so we, um, confident as an organization about, uh, the knowledge that, of what's happening in our classrooms. Uh, the other thing, um, I think probably you'll notice on here that's a little bit different from last year, although you've been seeing it, uh, there are four times where we're going to give staff another version of this that's, uh, stoplighted. So in October, January, March, and June, uh, for each of these strategies, we'll give them a red, yellow, or green update on each of the strategies, so they can quickly understand if we're making the progress we intended. Um, yeah, I think that's, those are some of our priorities for the upcoming year. I'm happy to answer any questions, but you've seen this a handful of times. I did take the word draft off for today, so I think we're official. We spent some time, most of my time when I, uh, addressed the staff on that first day back, was reviewing, uh, this plan on the page to just try to build some common knowledge around the priorities for the upcoming year. That's all I had prepared, uh, so I appreciate your time.
Quick question. On the PD quality, is maintained 3.5 or over, is that out of five? Is that how they score that?
Four-point scale. I'll have to get back with you on that.
I was just curious.
I think it's a four-point scale.
Okay, thanks.
I was curious about several of these.
It's a four-point scale.
Several of these are obviously percentages, but I don't understand what some of the numbers.
Sure, let me go through those real quick.
Intercritical 5, 6, what is that? I mean.
Um, so behavior on track, um, is the percentage of students that have zero to three referrals by the end of the school year.
What's underneath the behavior critical?
Behavior critical is the percentage of students that have 11 or more.
Oh, 5%?
So you want that to be low. You want behavior on track to be high and behavior critical to be low. Everything on here is percent, except for that very bottom line, the PD quality, and that is on a four-point scale.
Well, I just wanted to say, I was super excited to see this plan, and the, the vast majority of these data points on the bottom are moving in the direction that we want them to go. I think it's an indication that the staff is all doing a great job, great job leading, everybody's doing a great job in the classroom, just everybody seems to be moving in the same direction, and so I'm excited about what this year is going to bring.
I'm going to echo that, um, and make a comment that this is the right stuff to be attending to, so it's easy for us, as I've in years past commented on kitchens and equipment, or even just the facility stuff that we even did earlier today, none of which is more important than relationships with our kids, our neighbors' kids, communities' kids, and student achievement. So the teaching and learning, um, is paramount. That's why we exist. We're a teaching and learning institution. So the fact that you're attending to this, uh, even the rounding, regardless of what it comes back, you're getting people into classrooms that may need an excuse to get into classrooms, it's hard competing, uh, items. Um, and even if it weren't heading in the right, which it is, but even if it weren't, I love that the focus is there. So I think as a board, I think we make, I think we're committed to making sure student achievement is on our radar in relationship with kids and all the right things, which these, these are. So, um, like Susan said, it's, it's good work. Thank you for the work. Um, I know all of us, uh, including Natalia, who's now here tonight, appreciate, uh, what's being done, so thank you.
So I would like to say, um, the ninth grade on track numbers, and especially when you look down against the different ethnicities, is super impressive.
Second.
So, um, I guess the question, the next question becomes, then do we follow, do we have a measure for these kids when they go to their, out of their sophomore year? I mean, I assume we do, because we know, we know how many of them are on track. I said, does it follow through? Which I believe it will, because you get them started right, then, unless something catastrophic happens in their lives that, that pulls them off, they usually stay on track, but I want to make sure, because this is kind of our first real, you know, to me, the real, real positive movement we've had since COVID, you know? We've been really going the other direction for a lot of reasons, but I'd really like to, you know, kind of keep track of this particular group, just to see if it stays, because that could be another point that maybe later on we want to focus on. If it doesn't stay, then, okay, maybe there's something else, you know, whatever. Anyway, those are my thoughts.
And I'd like to add that, um, I'm very excited to see the, the growth and the positive trend in the, in the data that you have listed here. You said something when you were, um, speaking to the individual areas, when you got to the extracurricular involvement and access, that really makes me excited that we are ensuring that students have access and potentially finances are not a barrier. Um, I know we've talked before about really ensuring that Warren is represented, represented on a community level outside of just Warren, just Lake County level. There are many opportunities and programs that I really would like to see our students taking advantage of, and so to hear you, um, pinpoint that there was, is exciting, so thank you.
All right, any other comments from board members? There was a lot of praise thrown your direction, but it was very much earned, so it is not , uh, false praise, so sincere. Okay, so moving on from, anything else for super intense report that we missed? No, all right. For consent agenda, um, there's no administrative comments for this section unless we have, um, questions or requests for information, and we'll do that during the discussion phase, so let me lead us off. I move to approve the consent agenda items, which include approval of intergovernmental agreement between Exceptional Learners Collaborative, ELC, and Warren Township High School District 121, minutes of the regular Board of Education meeting, July 29th, 2025, personnel recommendations, and approval of, payment of bills dated August 19th, 2025, in the amount of $4,184,535.64. May I have a second?
Okay.
And now, is there any discussion? Okay, roll call vote, please.
That's second, Anderson?
Uh, Pope.
Oh, Pope.
The other deep voice.
Okay, roll call vote. Um, Pope?
Yes.
Fields?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Squires?
Yes.
DeMonte?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Great.
Moving on to discussion items, uh, where there is going to be a lot of context to each one of these items, let, let's start with the annual curriculum, uh, process overview, where I believe that Chris Geo Karas is going to provide us, um, some information for discussion.
Good evening. So in front of you, uh, you have the, um, the annual process that we follow in our instructional services, and there's really two separate processes. Uh, the second one is the, what happens in the spring from when we bring in the approved reading list, uh, to, for the board to review, and that kind of carries us through the, where we go out to bid for pricing and then order, uh, new novels, or the novels that we need for the following year. So that's, that's a pretty short timeline, but it's something that sits outside of the other primary, uh, timelines, so I want to make sure you guys had that. Uh, but really, the focus of this, I think, is on that primary timeline, which, uh, right now, we're actually in the middle of, so we're really, uh, kind of in the middle of it, so we're looking at, uh, when you guys see the curriculum guide, uh, when we come to you with that in October, that's really, you're looking at the result of work that began last January, in January 2025. So they start by, propose, that's when the lead teachers will look at proposing new courses. This year, we have about six new course proposals, including, including the freshman seminar class. Uh, then those proposals come in, we review them as an administration, review them with curriculum committee, uh, we're putting, pulling together right now from lead teachers, the, any updates in the curriculum guide, uh, before we have updates in dual credit, and all that comes together, and you guys see that in October, then after, after board approval, then we kind of move into the next phase of that, where we start to get things ready for course selection, uh, we start to get curriculum writing budget, uh, requests in in the winter, and then we start curriculum writing in July, uh, for implementation of the course in the following fall. Uh, so it really, the, the, the timeline spans a couple of years, it's a long timeline. Um, by the way, it's, I think it was a, a great question that Danny brought, is like, how does that work? So it really kind of kicks off for the 26, 27 school year, it kicks off in January of 2025, and then carries through that year is where we kind of wrap that cycle. Uh, then for just standard curriculum improvements, so all of our classes are on a five-year cycle for curriculum updates, uh, so every, about every five years, that's when textbooks tend, our digital textbooks tend to expire after five years, uh, so they're included in that process too, and they really start in that January, um, the second January on the timeline, uh, when they start to request for curriculum writing and, and things like that, that's the five-year cycle kind of kicks in there, uh, and they come together, and then they carry out through the next school year.
So, um, the way that you described that, there's, there's this process for new courses, they approve new courses, and then in the winter, we start writing for them, a lot over the summer?
Well, most of the writing happens over the summer, uh, that we, that we pay curriculum writing for, but when, by the time we, as soon as you guys approve a new course, the teachers are starting to plan the outlines of those courses, they're doing a lot of prep work and pre-work, uh, so we always say that the curriculum writing is kind of an honorarium, uh, just to, like, to, as they kind of put the final touches on courses, a lot of that work is done. like to, as they kind of put the final touches on courses, a lot of that work is done before that course even starts. And then, so really what ends up happening with our curriculum writing hours, that's actually teachers tweaking the original curriculum that they wrote as they go through the class for the first time.
And so, you're saying every class, in five years, every class has been reviewed and looked at for like an update or a...
Correct. And some classes update more than others. It just kind of depends. But every five years, every class is up on cycle to be reviewed, look at new textbooks, look at curriculum changes, that sort of thing.
Great. Can you give me an example of what a non-credit summer workshop is?
Yes. So, we have summer school, and summer school is tied to existing courses in the school. But sometimes we have needs for summer workshops. We, some would use to, we used to run a bridge course for some of the kids that would come in that wanted to go to geometry, but need a little bit more algebra work. It wasn't really a credit-bearing course, but just a little bit of help for kids. Another thing is college knowledge would be a summer workshop. So, we wanted to make sure that we have a way for teachers in different programs, if they have something that they want kids to have access to in the summer, a way to propose that and bring that forward as part of our summer school package in the winter.
Okay.
And what's college, what's college knowledge?
So, college knowledge is, it's awesome. That's a workshop, that's a workshop that we run right at the start of the summer. Our post-secondary counselors run it, and it helps students get, start working on their college application process, application essays help them become familiar with the process, so they're ready at the start of their senior year for the applications and things like that. I don't bet...
They don't start to work on their application. The application is done. They apply during a college. So, I mean, it was wonderful. I can't, I can't appreciate it more.
I don't know that they do much with financial aid, but we do have to, every student has to have a FAFSA in place in order to graduate per the state. And we do several FAFSA financial aid nights throughout the year.
So, when you're reviewing courses or curriculum, what data points are you all considering when you're doing that? Is there any type of particular student data or even feedback that's considered?
So, when we're looking at curriculum renewal, we'll sit down, usually me or the assistant principals will sit down, talk about like how are kids doing in the course? Are we seeing, you know, success? How is the success in the course translate to growth on, you know, testing? We take a look at student feedback on the course. So, if we're looking at like, do we want to improve something? We ask them to get some feedback from students, get feedback from other teachers in the department. Anything that we do at either campus, we do share with the other campus to get feedback from within the department. Because sometimes if you change something at the freshman level, that might impact something that happens at the junior or senior level just because of vertical alignment. So, try to look at that holistically before, as we make decisions on how to improve curriculum. And sometimes things are, you know, there's changes from the state, a lot of times in social studies, that, you know, we have to take into account and talk through, make sure that we're covering, here are the new things that we have to make sure we cover in U.S. history, things of that nature, or in health. There's a lot of times there's changes in that as well.
This was really helpful for us, who aren't in the biz, to understand how these courses kind of materialize and the work that continues to happen with the courses we have. So, I was, I was actually surprised by the five-year mark. I normally hear six years or seven years. Five is more frequent than I thought it would be.
Yeah, it's five, and sometimes we, our hands gets forced, and actually sometimes it's shorter than that as things shift and change. And we try to make sure that, because at the end of the day, we want to make sure that our teachers and kids have what they need. So, we're always, some, and we also give our lead teachers some flexibility. So, if that change does happen, we always call it a living document, right? Like, we move classes around and kind of keep things balanced. But sometimes, like, I think there were some changes in physics that we had to move, make some switches around. So, we moved physics up in the curriculum cycle, moved something else back that wasn't, didn't have any pressing need. And we worked through it with lead teachers, make sure that our curriculum is current at all times.
So, just to clarify, when he says there's change in physics, this is college board changing the AP requirement?
That, and some of the things that we wanted to do with our college prep, our regular level physics, in terms of just having better instructional resources for kids and for teachers, to have more of a hands-on approach to physics instruction. We didn't want to wait three more years to make that change. We wanted to make that change now because that's best for kids. So, we just made some, shuffled some things around in the science program to make that happen.
Why, help us understand, why do you feel like you need to shuffle things around? Can't you just put a course in and just add that to your list? Like, let's just do physics?
Trying to be, we always also want to be financially responsible. So, if we had, and if you take physics, which is a major science course, I think the year that we were doing physics was also a year that chemistry was up. Then we're like, okay, well, if we move chemistry back to where physics was and kind of swap the two, we'll be okay in terms of licensing, in terms of curriculum. But we can do this right now with physics, take care of chemistry if they have any updates in two years, and we're not going to spend, we're not going to have a huge uptick in our curriculum budget.
We're trying to keep that budget pretty consistent over the years. And also, it takes, like, the amount of effort that staff have to provide, you kind of try to keep that level so you don't burn them out.
Yep.
Thank you.
Welcome.
A lot of work, yeah.
Thank you. Formative, thanks. The next item we have, I believe Dr. Weisman is going to comment on our upcoming shared service committee and potential topics.
Yeah, so, I'm really excited about this. We have a date and a time and a place we're going to host these. There's one in October, and then one in the spring. And there are two board members for the shared services committee from each of the three school boards, Warren, Gurnee 56, and Woodland. So, because that first meeting is in October, it seems like it would just be a good use of y'all's time, if you want, to give some marching orders to our two board members that are attending that, so they know, go in and have some idea of what you'd like to prioritize.
Sir Beth and Natalia, and with Natalia that not here, Beth's gonna, I'll take some feedback. You should, because we may have ideas. So, we have this time, if there's anything that we want Beth and Natalia to bring up over their ideas. We're not solving these ideas, we're just topics for them to broach.
Well, it has come up a lot in just the two years that I've been on the board. How do we coordinate what we're doing academically and in terms of how we support students, social and emotional development? How can we make that whole process from K to 12 be more coherent? So, if there's a, if there's some interest from our feeder districts in talking about that, I would be very interested in...
And that could, to kind of further tease out what you're saying, that could come down to positions that possibly are shared salary and benefits, that could maybe have a foot in both worlds, or help transition, or, but there's, there could be others, other ideas too.
Coordinate, I don't know, or coordinating just how we approach it. I don't know what it would be. That's your job to figure out.
Thank you.
Anyone else's ideas for Beth?
Shared services. Define for me, what you mean by that.
So, discussing types of services that each of the district could divide and conquer. So, for instance, if we have a position, I'm looking at finances, just because she's right, sitting in front of me. If we wanted to share some type of an accounting service, all of us together, or some type of a service that would economies of scale make it more financially beneficial for the districts to share, instead of doing it separately.
First thing that occurs to me is buses, but you know.
Okay.
Yeah, it's a great example.
Yep, that's a good example. So, like, we already do some of that, right? District 56 and 121.
Perhaps we can help them with reading.
What's that?
So, perhaps we could help them with reading.
Yes, also, reading, yeah.
Students would read better when they got here.
So, there could be, if we, resources are finite and seem to be scarce every year that we move forward. If there's a way to pool resources and have this discussion at a governance level, you now have community members that I think many times want to see their taxing bodies work together. You being in county board previously are probably very aware of that. So, us as elected officials initiating that conversation, maybe there's opportunities there. So, we've talked in the past about attracting and retaining hard-to-fill positions that each on our own can't do, but maybe there's a recruiter or recruitment position that is shared between the human resources department that goes out and says, we got this gurney area with three or four, whatever we say, school districts, there's a position for you in one of those schools, and I can guarantee it, all the way from pre-K all the way up to high school. And so, that could be as positions and people to fill positions are harder to find. It also may allow us to provide an attractive salary for hard-to-fill positions that we can't do on our own. So, if we have a cost share with paying benefits, now all of a sudden, we can attract people. Just as an example, sometimes that's bilingual social workers, it could be psychologists, speech pathologists. Any of those specialty positions are very, very hard for us to get people for. It could be resources. We do a little bit with 56 as far as quest and food service. We share busing, maybe there's other ideas. It's important to have the conversation, and I think is a big win, just the fact that we're getting together twice to even discuss this, I think is pretty huge and shows our commitment to the taxpayers to at least have the discussion. If nothing comes from it, so be it. But I'm willing to bet that if we kind of all show our cards, and what are some of the struggling areas that we can't fill? We can't find bus drivers. Okay, let's come together and let's maybe all try to figure this out. Or, there's probably ideas there that...
I mean, we just had a special ed update. You know, everyone's struggling with special ed, repair professionals, all kinds of services. If we have students that align in the districts and need specific services, I mean, we've talked about the concerns with CDOL and some of our...
There are serious concerns at this point.
Serious concerns with that. So, maybe we can pull together and figure out a way to service our students between the three districts in a way that would save us maybe some money and some effort for that matter, so.
On a different level, how about, and I know you, legislative advocacy about issues that are in common. I mean, would that fall in this bailiff whip?
I think that would fall. I, there is some general advocacy, joint advocacy that happens, but most of it is broad, and there's not currently a targeted gurney, Warren Township area advocacy push. So, that, the other things that maybe haven't been mentioned, I think advocacy is a good one. Software, there's a lot of software purchased. To be honest, probably the best options for software sharing is at the, between the two elementary school districts. Curriculum between the two elementary school districts.
Tell them some of our electricity.
We could do that, yeah. I think that's a good example of infrastructure, yeah.
I, I think we all have, we all have different types of facilities, and it could just be using each other's facilities in an agreement to do so, no cost, you know? But maybe we offer Millburner 56 and 50 uses something here, but maybe they have something that we need as well. There could be fields, there could be practice. I don't know. I think, I think the discussion, and it's a different discussion, I'm going to kind of reiterate this, that our level is having than charging the people that work for us to have that discussion, because, and I'm not saying this would happen, but there is some, a level of, this is my purview, this is what I can control. And I think if there is some of that, taking it to this kind of level is, can be scary, but it's a good conversation. And we're not talking consolidating, removing positions. We're talking about how to make each one of us stronger. So, I want that to be clear too, and hopefully, Danny, you and your peers send that same message to their board members. This is not an exercise in fiscal cliff, and we got to start, that's not what this is. This is, how can we all start talking more, working more together? And the first step is two people from each organization just to get to know one another. Even the value of you building those relationships, you and Natalia, with the other, and just talking, like, oh, you've talked about this too at your meetings? It's connecting dots.
Well, like you said, it's not even about, you know, cutting position, whatever. It's about solving problems. Like, I've seen posts for staff, you know, needs in elementary schools, speech pathology, social worker psychology. We've done our same stuff. Like, if we could pull our resources, we'll be solving problems and adding positions for that matter, so.
Here's, here's another example. I, because I was, back in the day when I taught at Woodland, the Champions Daycare Center in the primary building was, kept me at Woodland. No one around here seems to remember or recognize that there's a daycare center not that far around the corner from one of our campuses. So, could we partner with, you know, each other to have a discounted rate for maybe teachers to have their kids there? I, Woodland does it. Can we expand that possibly? Maybe that's already done, maybe it's not. And maybe there's something we can offer them. But I think there's, we all have unique things in each of our organizations that if we just do reciprocity and, like, it could cost nothing but gain us tons. And by the way, that's a real item I would like you to bring up.
I wrote it down.
That daycare center.
Making notes here.
I will tell you, I used to walk down the hall and play with my one son every lunch period. It kept me at Woodland. It kept me at Woodland.
That's cool.
And if I, oh, sorry.
That's, no, I, just to close that out, as teachers are harder, going to be harder and harder to, yeah, stuff like that matters. So, go ahead, Tasha.
You've mentioned the possibility of software agreements. I would like us to consider that as well, just because in terms of the potential cost savings there, but also in terms of, like, specifically the communication software that's being used. That could be a way to really have some continuity among the littles and as they move up, in terms of keeping that parent engagement there, right? The platform is the same. So, I would love to see if there are any areas where we can...
That's a really good point. How can we make it easier for families to move through different districts?
Especially the cost value.
Company, there's the cost, but then there's the non-cost, which is if you, we need to get more into, we're education, but we also need to think about the customer service component. The parent experience, the more we can keep that consistent, that's really what you're referring to. And that may save money, like, I...
I mean, even, I remember grade school versus coming here, the grading platforms, the, you know, the lunch platforms, the, I mean, there's so many apps that you had to learn. So, that's a good point.
Thank you. That's a good comment. Anyone else's ideas for Beth to take back to their meeting?
I'm living on your first meeting, because it sounds like you could go to one.
Pack of lunch.
Pack a, pack a sleeping bag.
We'll look forward to the Cliff Notes version.
I will give it to you. Thank you, guys.
Important meeting. Thanks, Beth, for, you and Natalia for taking that on. We appreciate it. All right, moving on. There was nothing else on that item, correct?
Correct.
So, moving on to the Oak Lane Locker Room addition update, of which we got to participate earlier. I believe Chris Green has some timeline updates to share with us, and then if we have any questions for her.
So, this week, the silt fences will be going up. They'll be taking down the tennis courts fencing. Around the first, they'll start excavation and taking out like the asphalt and the curbing, the concrete and everything, and then they'll start digging the foundation. And around the 10th of September, we'll start the foundations, all the concrete. So, we're moving along.
Hi, Adrian.
Hey, we even moved some of the dirt for you today.
Yeah, thank you so much.
I mean, that's a head start, so.
On top of the concrete, yeah.
You're welcome.
I did, I did put also in front of you, I know when you guys met in July, or maybe it was June, whatever day we approved the bids, you asked us to make sure we were putting energy into communication. So, just as a reminder, we have a one pager that we gave to staff. It has some information, a lot of that's internal. And then, there's a copy of up through the first picture. I didn't include all the pictures, but the email that we sent to all of our families a couple of weeks ago. It has today's date on there, but that's just because that's the day that I printed it. We do have a page on the website now that's up and has a couple live feeds.
I love the cameras. That's fun.
That would have been nice to know before we were out there.
That's true, sure. And then, I know we did send out a press release yesterday, and we'll follow up with the press release tomorrow about the shovel event, the groundbreaking. So, I appreciate Chris and her team and the communication effort that they're putting in.
Likewise.
Yeah, thank you.
Yes.
It's a big project.
Any questions you guys have for us?
I think at this point, we've talked about it quite a bit. We're just at the excitement stage.
Right.
Get to dig it. Yeah, we did. All right, thank you for that. Moving on, there's the potential Gal Beach landscape enhancements. Danny's going to provide a few comments, and then I have a few as well.
I, just quick, this is like a picture from 2008, 2007 or '08, I think, up on the screen. And you'll notice that Gal Beach has a well-defined beach area and some water... Up on the screen and you'll notice that Gal Beach has a well-defined beach area and some water stuff.
Swimming hole.
There's a swimming hole. So what we're going to talk about is what we're at today. A couple of boxes that are up there and on your page. I think when Tony and I talked about it initially, we were going to like look out the window. It's pretty dark now.
There's no need for that.
Okay, all right. The red box is where the, the new locker room is going to be. The yellow box is that Gal Beach area with the water that I would, I do just want to bring up since we're here. We talked about this maybe a year ago about possibly doing some upgrades there or beautifying it. I also boxed in yellow next to the parking lot. So when we purchased the property from the park district for a dollar, it included that parking lot back there. And then everybody might not know, but in blue is the outline of a home. It's empty, but the district does own that property and the house that's on it. There's a house that people reside in, in between the home that we own and the yellow boxed parking lot. And then a house to the other side. Both of those neighboring houses are occupied, but we own that blue, that blue boxed house. At one point, there was a possible consideration a year or so ago to coordinate with the park district and the village. To try to give some attention to that Gal Beach area. Since we took ownership of that, we have given very little attention to it. There are two small buildings that are there. They are boarded up and locked. They used to be like, I think there was a fireplace, a changing area. They sold some food back there. But those are boarded up and locked up right now. At some point in the future, because we are putting a lot of energy and effort into. Not only, I would, I would say providing better services with the locker room. We replaced the turf. We're also after the locker room, going to ask you to repay the south parking lot. We're going to try to do some enhancements to that. So the parking is, and the flow of traffic is better and easier for families. So we're trying to address some things that have just been put on the back burner and deferred for years. I do want to at least once a year, bring up the possibility of doing something with that property. It's a community, our school is a community asset. Our students are looking at the property on a regular basis. So this is just a time to talk about any priorities the board might have.
Add some context to why this is being brought up here. Some dots were starting to connect with me. And I, when this was first brought up with the village and having a dog park there, I was very anti-dog park. Because I, again, high stakes testing, kids learning, hyper focused on instruction, woof woof over in the background. Doesn't do it for me. So I, but that being said, we're doing this, here's the dots that are being connected. One, we just ceremonial kind of did the shovel pitcher and putting in this beautiful locker room. And we also still have a flooding issue. So that's number one. Number, so protection of investments, we still have a light flooding issue. It might be a good time to rehash this. Two, it is a unused asset of the community that just sits there and does nothing. It can be used. I can get beyond my issue with the dogs, provided it's after hours or weekends only. Like it could be a weekends only dog park for the community if it ends up going that direction. So maybe there's parameters, but most importantly, I'm hearkening back to comments that I think was Pat Healy. Who said with the Army Corps of Engineers, we couldn't get, like we could not get beyond a certain point to address some of the flood issue. We also have an entity that has approached us like whatever it was, a year or two ago with Danny and had an initial discussion. Thank you for that because it's. But maybe we need to kind of reset and say, look, there's, I also know, having lived around here, not in Gurnee, but lived in the area for 20 some odd years. There was, through the years, constant chatter of the flooding issues in Gurnee. I know that they've purchased properties in Gurnee to help with flooding. We own one of four properties that are there, maybe even, so maybe there's a discussion there to help flooding. Maybe it helps the village of Gurnee. Maybe it helps us. Maybe two people can win. I also know we've had more discussions, not just with Gurnee, but with Elmer at the township. Who likes to have properties that his residents, by the way, this is Warren Township. I also see a trail sitting next to there, the Displanes River, River Trail. And I think that the Lake County Forest Preserves runs that trail. Now, here's where my dots start connecting. Who probably has regular contact with the Army Corps of Engineers? Like I know they develop land. Maybe there's some inroads, their relationships, some, they have heavy equipment. Maybe, maybe this is, hey, approach us, anybody, Village of Gurnee, Warren Township, Lake County Forest Preserves. All the above to have a shared opportunity. We're not trying to make money. We're not trying to, we just want this to look nice to the community to have it. And by the way, the part what we want is the, is flooding control. That's the part we care about and may even chip in if need be. So the timing could be ripe for us to just see, kind of have a discussion.
Do you have some awareness that there is a way to make use of this to help with flooding?
No.
Oh, okay.
I have zero. I'm saying.
Maybe there is.
Propose it.
Okay.
I'm saying propose it. I'm saying we're not the experts in that.
County Stormwater Management.
Sure.
And that's who the people are.
Right. But, so I think there's other people that have had these conversations who could contribute. And want to have another asset at their disposal for their residents. And it could look nice behind our school. So, no, I have no answers for any of this. What I'm proposing is one, as Danny wants to bring it up annually, this is a great time with the construction for us to talk about it. Maybe there's no interest and we just let it be another year. He brings it up again in a year. Two, if there is, maybe we start to vision what this could be. Or it could just be, hey, open invitation for anybody of interest to approach us. If there's any interest or if there's multiple interest, then we need to set a process for proposals. And then again, our interest mainly is not for the community to have a dog park. Our interest is water management. But maybe everyone can win in it. So anyway, opening it up for.
I'd like to just talk to the SMC.
Yeah.
As for water management, talk to the Forest Reserve.
Yeah.
Talk to Woodlands Research.
Yeah.
Which is, which owns a whole lot. A lot of the flood plain which is north of us, which is alleviating a lot of the flood in Gurnee. There are any number of places that would, might be interested in that for either for research and flood control and or just the Forest Reserve just wanting a buffer on their trail. There are any number of people who would be interested.
Right. So what I'm hearing is yes, there's interest in maybe opening up discussions at this time from you. What about other board members?
I, I agree with the, I would defer to the consensus of the board regarding what the comeback is, whether it's now, next year. But I'd like to add, I understand that there's additional property that the district owns on Stern School Road. So I'd like to include that into whatever it is we would decide to do. I just, I, like this is new to me. And so I'd like to know about all. So if there's anything else.
You probably want to like kind of digest this a little bit too. Yeah, we own this really amazing thing back there that just sits vacant.
Parking lot does get used.
Okay.
Because there's, well, that little piece of dirt you see up there is a softball field.
The field.
The JV team plays there. And the people that come to it park in that parking lot.
Okay.
Cross country too.
Cross country people probably park there too.
So do you foresee in one of these partnerships, a parking lot still there?
Yes.
Or are you concerned of if it does go mixed use that our people now don't have a place to park?
Really, parking up here isn't that much farther really. But would they know to park up here to get back there that they're used to parking over there now?
That parking lot is an important access point for the Displanes River Trail.
Okay.
You know, some, some of us rely on it as a place where we can go get on the trail.
Park that too.
So I wouldn't, I wouldn't want to get, totally get rid of parking back there. But I would love for the Gal Beach area to be something people can go to instead of just fenced off.
So the nice thing about us controlling, we own it, right? So whatever intergovernmental agreement, if it goes that direction, we can write into it. And some, that could be something like preservation of 50 spaces with 10 reserved for town, for school, blah, blah, blah. You know, if it goes that direction.
And it's not to say that they wouldn't need parking. So it's not as if it's going to go away. It's just.
No, whoever uses it, if, yeah. So if I am hearing you correctly, are you a hard stop or hey, we should start maybe kind of feeling?
I'd be very interested in some proposals what to do with that and to make it, partly because it is a. Multiple segments of the community are using that area and it's, it's not welcoming.
Right.
You know, like all the, I think it used to be, but.
So it's being used. It could potentially even be dirty or dangerous in some areas too.
Yeah, it just feels like a missed opportunity to have a nice presentation of.
Can we talk about through school a minute?
Hold on, let's close this out. I think it's better instead of going back and forth. I do think it's a great thing to bring up, but.
So that's it.
Okay. So yes, yes.
Absolutely.
Hester had, are you at, uh?
With me.
Fine, fine. Can I just ask one last question for Danny to you and our school leaders back there? Do you ever envision that becoming an area? And it's not to say it's still couldn't, right? If it's nice, we would maybe, we can write into whatever we want into it. Like we reserve first use of it during school days, school hours, whatever. Do you ever see a class, a club, ever utilizing that space? Because it is ours and our kids first before we start.
Yeah, right now it is you, that area is a central meeting point for the cross-country team. We, we don't encourage a lot of use of that because we don't have cameras back there. We don't have security. We don't go back, we don't send our security people back there. But it is being used right now for cross-country. It would be tough to do a whole lot back there other than maybe PE classes. PE classes are out without security cameras, but most of the time we try to keep our kids where we've got some supervision.
Okay. So it doesn't sound like there's a whole lot of potential future use back there either. And I do think the Village of Gurnee, not to kind of, I want to kind of highlight this. Even those multiple entities, they have an interest in controlling flooding and those, whatever. Four houses of which we own one and I think another is vacant possibly? Or are they all have residence?
I don't know about, I just know the two that neighbor.
Yeah.
Ours to the west and the east side. I know those are occupied. I don't know about the others.
So there could be, I mean, I know in the past they've done fair market value kind of offerings to people. There could be some interest there. All right. If that's all being said, I, I think we would love to, whatever Danny, you feel the discussion is next. Like, hey, just, I think the key is not favoring one entity. I think it's more like come with us, come to us with your ideas. And then we can explore them, kind of an exploratory phase. This isn't the most important thing going on. Kids are starting school, teaching and learning is first. But we also have this nice locker rooms that we just, and I think we do need to at least talk about the flood control piece. Thanks everyone for, is there anything else Danny on that topic that you wanted to bring up?
Do you want to come back to Stern School?
Oh, I did. So go ahead, Steve.
Yeah, real quick, obviously that's adjacent to a new, relatively new Lake County Forest Reserve which is undeveloped. Immediately to the west of that is a large forest.
What are you talking about? Okay. Just making sure.
It's right, it's adjacent to a forest preserve. If anyone wants to tour, let me know. There's, it looks like a farm field.
Oh, thank you.
But behind it, there's some beautiful old oaks and I think the Forest Reserve might be interested in it. It's really.
We have had, prior to you being on the board, we have had discussions of that property. Should it be something, reserving it for future use? It's being farmed, so we're not really losing money.
Help me find this.
I don't know if it's still being farmed.
It is right here.
Yeah. I, I think the thing that.
Okay, now go, now come down, down, going up.
Older, colder.
There you go. Okay. That's good. Right there.
There we go.
Starts right here. Yeah.
This is the edge of Hunt Club Farms right here.
John, step back just a little bit.
This is the, this is where it starts right here. This is the.
What is that road?
That's not a road. That's sort of a riding path on the edge of Hunt Club Farms. This is the entrance to Mill Creek Subdivision. That's about the middle of it. So it goes from here up to here, over to here and down, right, and I think it ends right here.
Yeah, that's where the Forest Reserve starts.
What's the brown?
That's dirt.
Fields.
Because it's where they farm it.
Secondly, if I could, it's a, it's a long shot. It was just a personal approach. But the fire chief of Gurnee indicated to me at a meeting that they were interested in a firehouse on the north side. They might, he inquired to me, would we ever be interested in selling at least part of that property for the fire station?
You bring up a, so last time, that's actually an interesting point. Because I think we also think in terms of all or nothing propositions. There's no reason why you couldn't say to a local government partner, sure, we could sell you five acres to put up your fire station. You know, and then we still have room for, but I think when we first had this conversation, and I do think that could, conversation could and maybe should happen. But it requires a much bigger conversation because this, we're never, there's always this question of if we were to ever, well, let's see now, we're committing to adding on. So I don't, and our student population goes down and it's like, yeah, I, maybe there's a, a more honest conversation there about what we should do with this. John has the history though, so maybe I defer to him a little bit.
The original purchase was going to be 50 acres.
Yeah.
50 acres for us and 50 acres for the township. As we said, we only needed the 50 acres because we wouldn't need athletic fields. Because you could integrate them into the football field and you know, blah, 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 blah. Only need one football field, no matter how many campuses you have and so on and so forth. So the, originally the far, if you're looking at it over there, the far right side of it was going to be the township's 50 acres. And the left side of it was going to be our 50 acres. And there was a disagreement over where the entrance would be. And Mrs. Simpson got mad and decided she went to the people and tried to buy her 50 acres without us. So.
All right, township's out.
Dr. Chovitsky said, ah, not so fast, onion breath. We went back and bought the 100 acre, we bought all 100 acres. So that's how we ended up with 100. We don't need 100.
That was plotted out. You could see the roads. That was plotted out for development, future development.
That, that's something, it was plotted out by the people we bought it from for one acre lots.
So like for Tasha, this is probably the first time she's hearing all this. She's got a lot to go back.
This happened in about 2010. So this is when real estate was dumping. And the people that owned it were developing it, were underwater about $5 million. So we bought it for, from them for $5 million less than they paid for it because we looked it up. So we got the 100 acres.
So it would, it was purchased when, as my understanding is the population was increasing. So it seemed like there's potential we were going to need it. And now, you know, we've hit a curve and we're going down. But as long as there is property inside of Warren Township that could be developed, that would add enough students that we would need more space. It would not make sense for us to sell this because we are never going to get enough property for that kind of cost again.
Right.
So.
Right. There's five thousand acres.
So we need to hold on to it until Warren Township is so heavily developed that we could not possibly.
Okay. My recollection in all these discussions, especially during the referendum, was that a portion. And I don't know if it's large, majority, minimal, a portion of that land is on a flood plain. Right? Is a flooding concern. Maybe we need to look into that.
This, this, this speaker right here.
Yeah. So I remember something about that and I, please don't quote me even though I'm on the record. But maybe we should just double check and see what the flooding.
Conversation that you're remembering.
What am I remembering?
Was about, because I was saying there was like 8,000 acres of undeveloped land in the district. But there's only like five or six because some of it's in the flood plain. But I don't think any of that land.
You don't think any of that land is.
It's all going to be a subdivision.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, I'd like, I'd like to know more. Is it costing us anything to maintain it? Is it just?
We farm it.
We're renting it.
We rent it.
We don't pay property taxes.
We don't lose money on it.
Before the Forest Reserve bought this, this is Mill Creek Forest Reserve, everything here, all the way up, way up there to Stern School Road. Before the Forest Reserve bought that, Tim had plotted out 800 houses.
Well, he was over here too, on the other side of Stern School.
On the other side of Stern.
Where other dirt is, yeah.
And correct me if I wronged John, that was a lot of the rationale for potential to build a new school.
It was that, but it was everything. It was everything that, all you got to do is drive up Hunt Club Road. And both sides of it, there's nothing. And that's our district. Not up to 173, but you know, past Wattsworth Road, we're still going north up there. So there is just all kinds of acreage up there that, that could be a subdivision. It's not, but it could be.
Well, that's why.
And I think the Smiths are getting ready to sell. Because they closed the horse farm. They're gone.
This is going to be 300 houses right here in the next couple of years. This is gonna be three hundred houses, right here, in the next couple of years. This, this right here.
They've got fire hydrants out there, they were ready to build on that in 2009.
Well, that's in the Forest Reserve, too, that was there before the Forest Reserve. But everything, west of Stern School Road, and west of Hudson's, between there and Deer Path, is gonna be developed within the next couple of years.
I, I would, uh, what might help is if I take the next month and go back and put a history together, uh, John can help me a lot with that, but then also give you an update on, we do have a multi-year lease agreement, uh, so I can give you some information around the income of that, that might be a good next step here, so just get everybody in the same page.
We have, I think, reports written somewhere already.
Yeah, and we had a, I don't remember when the most recent study of the housing was done, it was done maybe during the referendum-esque, you might wanna pull that, too, and see, but that might be so outdated at this point.
Like demographics enrollment, or...
Yeah, yeah, but there was something else.
Housing development study.
Something like that, yeah, I can't remember specifically, it seems like a hundred years ago, but...
All right, to pull this together, Danny's gonna work on gathering some information. I think, from what I'm hearing, it was a good exercise to, as long as we're talking about land, to bring this up, we'd be remiss to not, but if there probably is development on the horizon, and if we certainly didn't do it during the referendum, it may behoove us to hold on to it, um, for future use, getting a chunk like that. But I think that's, uh, could he, it could be a follow-up discussion after Danny shares some information on it, but thank you for the discussion, at least tonight.
It can be more valuable as time goes on.
Land always...
Yes, the land goes up.
Goes up.
So...
View it as an investment.
It's a rainy day fund.
There you go. So, that concludes, I think, um, that section of our agenda, uh, the discussion items. So moving on to action items, uh, we have, uh, the approval of the resolution to, of preparation of tentative budget, which I believe Chris Green has a couple of comments to share before us having discussion.
So the budget is fluid, this is the tentative that was in the board documents, um, and I think the revenue numbers will probably not change much. Expenditures, um, still working on salaries, we had a, our first, um, district-wide, all-staff payroll on Friday, so I can get better numbers, more exact. Um, but I, um, met with all the district administrators that were responsible for their department budgets, and we agreed upon, um, their budget amounts, but there's still things, you know, kinda popping up. Over the last couple of days, I've had a couple of people say, you know, I was gonna order this, this is a lot more expensive than it was last year, so, still working on those items, so, um, still firming up numbers for, uh, the final budget in September. Just a little bit about, um, revenues, um, the corporate personal property replacement tax, which has been decreasing over the last two years, we actually got notification that it's up two percent this year. Um, the good news is that we are gonna get our federal money with our grants, which is a, a big win. Um, let's see, uh, student fees, those are gonna remain flat, um, we didn't really increase those. Evidence-based funding, which is our state aid, um, will be increased by a hundred and twenty-one thousand, eight hundred and twenty-one dollars and fifty-eight cents. Um, expenditure-wise, uh, let's see, we, and, uh, salaries increased, um, based upon the contract, our, um, insurance went up, so, um, taking those into account for operations and maintenance budget, um, we put in some numbers for some equipment that we will be purchasing, and the continuing of the, um, ten-year facility plan, uh, maintenance programs, or maintenance projects. Uh, let's see, I'm also budgeting for an, uh, expanded, uh, purchasing of new classroom furniture, and then, uh, four million dollars for phase one of the almond campus roof. Most of the locker room, uh, costs will come out of this year's budget.
We're all, we're always...
What year, what year, what?
What's the deal?
Yeah, we're getting close. I mean, you know, next summer, we'll be working on the almond roof, and then we'll have two mi, it's broken into three phases, so, so we have like...
Lord have mercy.
Yeah, well, they're big roofs.
These roofs, I'm sure they're there.
But as long as we're talking about roofs, I wanna say, that was amazing that that roof operation got out of the way for the first day of school. I came by and was like, oh, it's gone! I mean, I know they're still up there, but they figured out another way to manage things, so they're not...
Dr. Keely was on that.
He was bullying the roof for a week.
Um...
Thank you, Dr. Keely.
Good job.
Um, and last but not least, you probably saw in the budget chart that we will have another transfer to pay for the rest of the, um, locker room project. We moved eleven million, but, um, we'll probably move, um, up to like seven million, depending on what the final costs of the, um, construction will be. And that's all we have, and unless someone has questions.
Questions for Chris? Nope?
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, uh, does someone wanna make a motion? And if not, I can do it.
You go right ahead.
All right. I move to approve the resolution of preparation of the tentative budget for FY twenty-six. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion, although we already asked if there was discussion, uh, so, well, let's move on to roll call vote.
Anderson?
Yes.
Squires?
Yes.
Pope?
Yes.
Fields?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Demonti?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Great, thank you. Next item is the memorandum of understanding with SGA Youth and Family Services. This was in your board packet. Our administrative staff does not have any comments unless you have specific questions for them. Do any of our board members have questions for them on this? Seeing none, um, I can go ahead and make the motion. Uh, I move to approve the memorandum of understanding between Warren Township High School and SGA Youth and Family Services. May I have a second?
Second.
Roll call, uh, discussion? Nope. Uh, roll call vote, please.
Demonti?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Pope?
Yes.
Squires?
Yes.
Fields?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Motion carried.
The third and final, uh, item here in this section is the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six student handbook revision, of which Dr. Weisman would like to make a few brief comments, um, and then we can discuss.
So sometimes over the summer, we'll come back for, uh, any tweaks that we still wanna make to the handbook. Uh, we did find over the summer, uh, just a statement that was inaccurate around detentions. Um, our deans do, in fact, assign, uh, detentions during lunch for students, um, and then we had recommended some additional language around attendance and grading in the spring that we thought were good proposals, and then when staff came back in August and reviewed those with us, it was, actually made things more confusing, so we're, we're requesting to go back to the original language and then, uh, remove some repetitive language that was, that was making things more confusing for people. Uh, both, neither of these are a change in practice.
Questions from board members?